She's working.
She's working.
She's working right now.
Yes, but.
She's just wowed up.
No, why?
You gotta wipe the dust, everything for again.
Yeah.
Mows the yard, weeds. Oh, weeds eat them, weeds eat.
Jason, before you get one of them wiped out, I need to buy him everyone.
Man, they don't make them like kids.
I just like to have lucky. Now, there's other baggage that comes with it.
He got her when she was like thirteen.
Whoa.
And he was like seventeen, I think.
Good job. What's that?
Yeah.
She's over there.
There you always go there, don't you?
Yeah.
Just, just, I mean, we just jump off a cliff, just, uh, no, we ease it in, just.
Don't, don't, didn't know when it just died right there.
We should come to the plan, setting his only meeting.
I'm good.
We could go the other way now, because you never know what's gonna happen there. You could come in and be dead silent, you come in, there's twenty people up front petition saying, hey, no, they gotta go. Isn't that right? Tell me, Jason, all of them crazy and stupid, you just never know what you're getting. They love you or they hate you, don't they? But we love Jason, Jason actually.
I try.
I try.
I'm gonna run against him for counsel, but I mean, you know.
Please. He said, please.
I tried that with the court, I think, one time, and Mr. Baker, you know, sounded spanked, so, you know.
Did you run for court?
I did, I did. I did feel bad though, because he'd be, he'd be, he'd be slinger pretty good too, so, you know. Everybody loves you.
Been here ninety-eight years.
Yeah. But, it'd be like me running against Dave, I just couldn't put it, I couldn't stand up against Dave.
Hey, Eric.
Take care. Yeah, let's put your name on there, right. Uh, I talked to your ex-husband and your husband. Ex-husband, yeah, your ex-husband said, you know, we called, and he said, who knows what we can do.
Just jumped off a cliff, and we got.
He's on the road.
He's still in the release, it way, way back.
I thought Jason, and I said, hey.
He don't care, I do, too.
I did get him somewhere, it's, it's, it's.
Take him out.
I quit cliff diving, so you don't get, it hurts, so.
No, he's okay, he's, he's gonna take care of it.
Hey, how many, how many kids got a girlfriend?
Call me, let me tell you what you want, or like the mayor says.
No, I don't know.
You know that I wanna do anything.
I know two so far.
Yes.
I talked to one of their dad, one of the dads about a day, one of them guys.
Yeah, he's on line, he's in here, and then he calls, and he explains, you, they explain shit to your daughter, and me having to try to.
I, I, I understand, my boy, like he did with it, it's cool, I have, it's, 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 it's afterward, it's.
Yeah, there's no sense, your, her daddy's a contract.
But we've all said that.
Now, since how long now?
The cell phone, one of the greatest things ever been, one of the worst. Same thing.
It'd be like, you know, you know, it'd be like, you want me to go play golf instead of you, I can't, like, you probably can't.
Kid told a good truck out this weekend, uh, coming back, he plays at five o'clock. And then went down to Texas Saturday, and played, went Friday night, they drove back Saturday, damn, well, he got, he got some. Like four, it wasn't ball, no.
That's all it ever did, I was like, man, wind sideways, and you know, just work, and come back to the.
Pretty hard, bro. He does.
That's 'cause he doesn't work twelve hours in his time.
When he say, can I use mom?
Well, sometimes, Donnie.
You have to.
No. Hey, Dan.
Hey.
How you doing?
All right, how are you?
Fine.
Hey, Brad.
There, he, he smiled there, there, it was, I don't know what he missed me, too, but that's a smile.
Yeah, don't worry about cliffs, I jump off of, don't worry about you.
Yeah, he said, I got that hundred dollars that I owe you tomorrow, he's like, yeah.
No, tomorrow's Wednesday, holiday and Thursday.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, you're right. I'm ready for Thursday to hit.
Hey, Bonnie.
Hi, guys. Okay, there you go.
Yeah, it's lit.
I can remember what it is, I have a call. What's that?
You know, they go.
So, I don't know, he said, they said, no, they.
Brandon, how are you?
How you feel?
Much better.
Y'all healed up?
Uh, we're getting more healed up, I'm getting there.
We just call you Bonnie Brandon.
We're fine.
He is, I hear.
Good.
Oh, it won't be now.
We're fine, fine.
I'm not much, from what I know.
Everybody's happy, and.
Yeah.
Hello.
Hello.
Chief, I didn't get to meet your meeting, great, Ernie Lincoln.
Sure, thanks.
Nice to meet ya. I worked with you several years ago, I was on part of your twenty-three years, and I worked in the bricks and stuff with you. Okay. Good deal, glad to have you, man.
Who's like those?
Hair spray.
Gee. Kids that were stripped off.
Yep.
Yeah. He come in today, went to the nurse, that city pool.
Yeah, I got six o'clock.
Please, ladies, to the flag of United States of America, to the regardless of which is the same, is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's justice, there is a prayer. Do I get that, please? Have a following, we come before you, united God, we thank you for the city, well, we thank you for our neighbors, help in times of need, but we ask God that you lead, guide, and direct this council as we do business for the city. We ask God that you keep your hands on our police, our fire, safety, our soldiers abroad, God, and we ask all this in Jesus' name.
Called a meeting with order by issue of this, study for roll call, both please.
Cindy Wood, here. Candida Robinson, here. Kara Rhodes, here. Billy Poe.
Here.
Jason Stewart.
Here.
John Paul Thompson.
Here.
Ernie Lincoln.
Here.
Brandon Schrader.
Here.
Bonnie Winkle.
Here.
Brett Martin.
Here.
Uh, we have a forum to convince, uh, you, I, meeting, uh, excuse me, the conference meeting, in your packet. I give you a minute to look over it, and I'll have to hand it over to the group.
Who wants to approve?
Smoke and major message, Stuart, approve.
Second.
That Brandon, second, second, Brandon Schrader, any discussion? All the flavors say aye?
Aye.
Are called, is no? Stand approved, time reports also on your packet, I give you a minute to look over it, and a manual motion to approve it. Manual motion approved. Yes, Stuart, manual motion approved. Second. Second, Ernie Lincoln, any discussion? All the flavors say aye?
Aye.
Are called, is no? All right, all right, call for reports, uh, Chief Thomas, welcome through. Give us a brief, uh, what your first bill is, if they like.
Well, I don't really have a report yet. Continue the, uh, still learning my way around the police department. Obviously have a very good police department that everybody can be proud of, hope I can make it better than what it already is. Uh, as far as I can give you, though, we didn't have a big burger at the pharmacy the other night. Detective Cagle, he got called out at twelve-thirty at night, he's been working nine stops, round the clock, coming ever since. We hope to have some news on that very soon. One thing I wanna mention is how welcoming the whole community has been with city council that I've already met. And everywhere I go, people smile, shake my hand, welcome me to the tournament. Friday night, we're from Mexican restaurant, some of the officers, high school boys. Not sure my house is high school or whatever. Thank you all for.
Thank you, sir. All right, uh, Chief, Chief Kempers' daughter had surgery today, everything.
Yeah, uh, so, everything went good, they were headed home about four o'clock.
Talked good, good, everything's good. So, is this a chief black?
Uh, just a couple things, so, uh, obviously, uh, Thursday, we'll do our annual nine-eleven walk, um, the police department's actually gonna join us this year in doing that, some officers are gonna join us afterwards, we're, uh, all gonna have lunch together. In October, we will get a, uh, burning trailer from the Arkansas Fire Academy out of Camden, is actually gonna bring one down and leave it for the month for us to use. Um, it was bought through a grant, and they take it to different parts of the state, and, uh, we were lucky enough to have, one of our guys, uh, our training captain, Don Chodoy, is, uh, one of the only few certified in fourteen-oh-three A and B to be able to actually teach live fire across the state of Arkansas. Um, which is something really cool, most, uh, right now, that class is only held at Camden for the instructors, and they had one from all four corners of the state, they got to go, and Don got picked to go for us, um, so that's gonna be really cool, so we're excited to get to do some actual live fire training. And it'll actually just be parked right behind the fire station, it's a, uh, like a fifty-three foot, it's pulled by a big rig, it's, it's really neat, so, we'll have that in October, so that's all I've got right now.
Fagan's not here, he's been in class, uh, recertification last week. Uh, Ms. Kelly is not here, and Richard Campbell is out of the country, but I do have a report from him. Uh, the AEDBG, it's actually EEDBG block grant, uh, we were approved for two-hundred thousand dollar grant, uh, this is for, uh, phase one of the LED lighting at the sports complex and ball fields. So that'll save us some money, plus we can make it a little brighter out there, uh, we've got a meeting scheduled, uh, we'll stay efficient with the proper details tomorrow. Uh, R dot tab grant, uh, we're waiting on confirmation for phase two, we've got a meeting tomorrow, which I'll talk about a little later, about all that. And I said, Arkansas Parity Parks Fund Grant, uh, it was filed, or Arkansas Parity Parks Grant was filed last month, uh, this is for new playground equipment, he'll wait on review and, uh, decision for that. Uh, future grants that we're looking forward is, uh, to replace and repair faulty fire hydrants, and new turn, turnout gear for firefighters and the police department, and I'll talk about this as well. We're seeking grants, uh, when we're available for tasers, uh, dash cams, and other things that, that police department may need. All right, do you have any committee reports? Word reports?
I, I, I have one, somebody else started, sorry.
You're right.
Oh, okay, I had, I just, Ms. Danny Block contacted me, I think she did call your office, but I told her that I would bring it, give me into the town sixteen, about some property, you may wanna talk about that beside her, she's trying to figure out, she's told she owned it, she says she's not sure, and there's a lot of confusion, so, I just wanted to make sure somebody might could clear that up with her.
This is, uh, another instance, just like the one we had last month, with, uh, with, uh, home on Ada Street, where it was, where it was gonna be a street, and it's not anymore, and it's not ever gonna be, um, that section there is, it's the same way. Uh, I explained to her, I went to her house and went to her for a while, and I explained to her the whole situation, uh, how we had gone about doing that, and, uh, Russell Paul, who actually said that he would try to get some information for her, because basically, it's on her, uh, we just have to, uh, pass a, uh, resolution like we have, and as soon as we say we, we have a lot of money for the property. Uh, others, and in her case, we're gonna have a, um, drainage easement, uh, only because there is a drainage pipe, so we're all the way to that property. So we'd have a drainage easement of property as far as, we're, we heard we don't have any deed or anything on the property.
That's what she, you may have supposed to, went over there after she had contacted me, I'm, I'm not sure, it's been a, it's been a bit, I told her I would do that at the meeting, so.
That's where we're at with it now, waiting on them to get the information that's needed, so that, um, we can have to go a resolution that gets the.
Okay. That's all.
Mine is Harland Street, I know me and you talked the other day. So, there wants some clarification. Is, 'cause they called the mayor's office, now whether you got the message or not, but a lot of people said they've called. What do we do on Harland Street to get it cleaned up? Is the city gonna clean it, or do we have to go to the homeowners to clean it? 'Cause I know it's a touchy situation, but it's easy, we, we have sent people through there and cleaned it regularly. Uh, the problem is, uh, one of the problems is, uh, weighing low trash out of the dumpster and down through that street, people drive down that street, throw the trash out as well. Uh, when the drains and the water goes to that area, 'cause that's a low area, it brings trash everywhere else. Um, technically, the way we discussed it before, their property goes to the center of the street, so, that's their property, just like the avenue, it's their property to clean, and I'm told that, even though. So do we need to issue warnings for them to clean their property, because there's weeds that are taller than me, and I'm six foot and wide. Um, that is something that I'll need to talk with, with, um, Gasway about, discuss exactly how the best way to handle that. Um, again, we have gone through there, what, I guess, through the years, and cleaned it. And I don't know if the city needs to go over there and clean it initially one time, and then tell the property owners, let's say, we've taken care of it, but now it's on you, you need, it's your easement. Whether you got a fence up or a ditch in that yard, it's your easement, I don't care if they go spray it, or they be, or round up or whatever, they kill everything. But like, the, the weeds behind blossoms are six foot tall. Well, the ones right directly behind blossoms is blossoms. Yep. The ones on the street, again, it's gonna depend on what side of the street it's on. I don't have a big issue with the city, uh, cleaning it one time, when we've got something that's not more pressing, when we have to get done, that's the problem, it'll be right into the reasons, because we've had cleaned a couple alleyways, and it's over from now, it's on me. Now, one issue that I'm having to deal with right now is, uh, our coat enforcement guy, Ed, is, is bent off, and maybe out for a little longer, hoping to get him back before he's off again, anyway. Uh, Gary, they're trying to do as much as they can, and still having to deal with all these effects and stuff, he's been very busy with that, so, uh, that's, uh, so we're at. I will talk to Mr. Gasway, a little more clarification on all that, and I'll talk to Mr. Fagan. Uh, I think the easiest thing would be for us to clean it one good time, when it gets cooler, and everything starts dying, so it's easier. Clean it up and tell them that everybody. The debris, the trash, the stuff that, uh, just, that will, it's not just blossoms, I mean, it's all the way up through there, the debris dumpster down through there, was just loudly, it was brought up, and the man, Donnie, was disgusted, uh, about, uh, putting, uh, uh, surrounds around the dumpster, to keep their trash in their dumpster, in their area. So, that's just something that, uh, would have to be addressed, that I'll have to do that part, so, but, and after your place, I'll call Mr. Gasway, uh, to, to Fagan, see what we can do about getting that taken care of. And I've addressed that issue several times, that we have gone down through there and cleaned it up, but getting the trash up, we have, gonna clean the, the trees and, and, uh, the brush up, but we'll discuss that, see if we can do that next year. I'm ready, well.
I'm sorry, I, yes, thank you. Uh, and I spoke to you about this, did I? My warden, I know it's the housing authority property, but they painted it, it's, um, that the brick hills, did you find out anything on that, or did you, the paper guards to find out?
I have not found out, um, a solid answer. Uh, I, I have called Mr. Ray several times, he's not returned my call, uh, all I can do is just keep talking, I don't know anybody else to talk, he was, he was the contact, the one contact that I was given, that I spoke to before.
Kevin Hodges.
I'm sorry.
Kevin Hodges, this, this is her brother.
Kevin Hodges. Can you talk to Mr. Sandler, please? I feel like I talked to him last week, and he felt pretty confident that St. George was gonna be able to do something, I don't know if he talked, I've not talked to him the last couple of weeks, so, whatever.
I hope that you say, very needed, urban bank for me.
And I agree.
I just don't like to get pushed to the back burner, I know we've got a lot going on, so, that's very important. I just don't want to get pushed to the back burner. I know we've got a lot going on, so that's very important.
Yeah, I agree with that one hundred percent. And I also discussed with someone else about, uh, uh, our bus being able to transport. And we're trying to work out a schedule. We'll, we'll just transport if, if that's what things, if St. North is going to. Anyone else? Hey, we don't have any unfinished business, uh, new business. First thing that's on the list is ordinance number seven point six. Uh, this ordinance is going to be full and drawn because, uh, the ordinance was passed in twenty twenty-three. Uh, adopt the state fire code and put a big state of plumbing codes, which we must follow those codes by law. Um, the city's always adopting codes to allow, uh, enforcement of the codes that provide. Citizens will place where they define the codes, uh, that they must adhere to. Uh, I should have caught that before placing on the agenda, uh, but I didn't. I made excuses, uh, although, uh, the last couple of weeks has been pretty busy trying to find some. So, um, anyway, with that being said, that ordinance is withdrawn. Any questions? All right, next up is to discuss an ordinance proposal from Mr. Schrader about committees. Uh, he and I have agreed on most of the ordinance down to basically the number of council members being on each committee. Uh, I have provided you a copy of the latest one with my, my changes and the highlighted areas. Which, uh, again, I think the real issue is the number of council members. Um, I wanted to include that with two council members, not be required to have three. And, um, here's the thing, these committees are supposed to be citizen committees with council members as liaisons, uh, between them and the council. Two council members on most, uh, committees are good enough to be liaisons and bring information back to the council. Uh, the committees cannot enact any laws and regulations. They can only recommend it. Uh, other than the personnel policy committee, uh, which is the city personnel policy, which then will put council members in study. Put council members to relay their information back to the council with the easiest, more, and possibly with a lot less scrutiny. Uh, was brought up about, uh, having these committees have earned Robert's rules of order, but that can be learned, uh, and learned away from, I mean, on your own. Without control of the committee. Uh, so that's, that's the only major change. And there is a couple that's, I added the first two due each quarter as requested, uh, four as requested. I added the end writing by at least two committee members on each one of those. Um, and then the other was on the section eight that I've already submitted to the mayor for approval. I added that, those three words, the question on the council agenda. Uh, other than that, that's the only difference that I've seen. I'll let Mr. Schrader answer to that.
Thank you. I appreciate it, Mayor. So, uh, first of all, just once again, I'm excited that this ordinance is in front of us. Is this draft exactly what I wanted to know, but it's a great start, which it really is. Uh, now we're sitting here talking about it and, and trying to get some feedback and trying to, hopefully get some input from everybody on how we can do this. So, you know, Mayor said that it was a citizen venture and I agree it is. But that's not saying we can't graduate and blossom into something else, especially as we have a more active council, as our city grows and grows at a pretty high rate. I don't think it's too forward thinking to, to go ahead and start looking at something like this. Uh, what this is going to do is it's going to take a lot of those committees that are currently or not meeting, consolidate those into three different groups, major groups. Finance, public works, and public service. And, um, what it's really going to do is not having the same people in everything. So I think you get burnout with citizen volunteers pretty regularly. So, uh, to get a quorum for a meeting, it's probably pretty difficult. You'd probably have three or four people on four or five different, uh, on four or five different committees. So, doing that, I think this is going to be, uh, it's, it's not going to be quite as burdened on, on the citizens and the citizens that are leading this group, that's, that are leading these committees. Um, as far as, I definitely think the three is, is a manageable number of councils. Uh, we've got a great council. We've got heads from all different places and who's seen and have experienced the different areas. Uh, I don't see how one, one other council member is going to be that big of a deal. Um, because obviously these are things, these are public meetings anyways. They go in the public. This is something that we should be doing anyway. We should be announcing those and like, it's just, it's such a good office, it's a whole thing. So whether it's two or three, let's just do it. Um, uh, that's an extra layer of transparency, obviously. Uh, if you kept up with some of the other phases of government, it's not unheard of to have a, a committee that vets different things, whether it's an ordinance or whatever. Uh, just kind of a speaking point and what it is, is it gets that conversation going and then it moves on and then eventually makes its way to council. And I'm not asking anybody to do extra work. It's just essentially going to be one meeting. I think we ended up coming down to one as needed or, or, uh, quarterly, uh, which is fine. I mean, just, you just have to figure out how, the hows, the whats, and the wheres as far as you're, you have to kind of space out your, your ordinances. Just to make sure that we are getting it from these committees. Um, lastly, I just think it gives council members the opportunity to work within the committee knowledgeable, if not just Robert's rule of order. And that's obviously, that is something, but, uh, just to learn how a government functions, how we do these things, how, how to be involved, how to really kind of spearhead these whole things. Like, except for these committees are supposed to be self-sufficient, you know, when it's not up to the mayor to have to run them all, it's not up to the department to have to run them all. It's, it's, you know, a lot of times they're chaired by council members who essentially do the same thing that you're doing now. And just, and I think that's, that just, it just makes it more efficient, it makes us more confident in what we do. And it gives us information that we can go to the public, hey, this is what we're doing. And we're not getting an ordinance on a privacy, going on it on Tuesday with maybe a, a privacy clause and no privacy clause. So I, I think there's a lot of pros to that. So I'd love to hear anybody's feedback, for sure.
But I want to respond to that and I agree, you know, pretty much what you're saying. Again, uh, it's not set for two council members, at least two council members. And we can be more or less.
But that's your decision, right?
Right. And if you look, we've gotten towards two, some committees already. Um, I still believe that this is an opportunity for some of our citizens to be able to work within the council to help. Because not often be here, council meeting, not often be at all committee meetings. If they are on the committee, uh, they have more of an opportunity to interact with the council and think what the citizens are thinking as well. And you kind of look at it in a, in the essence of having, uh, extra sub-council members, if you want to call it that. Because they're here for the citizens as well and bring it before the committee. And again, there's nothing saying that, uh, other council members can't be at committee meetings and all of that, and which is great. I think that's good. Uh, now, uh, with the new law, uh, they, uh, all of these committee meetings have to be, uh, announced publicly, uh, and they are recorded. So, uh, as far as the transparency part, and I will say again, I said, sir, uh, I would know if the mayor has been more transparent than I have. Some people may not agree with that, but I'm sorry, I mean, I'm.
Well, when we have a website that has all the stuff on it, then I'll say that, but in fairness, well, that, that is transparency. You can go see ordinances, your meeting minutes, all those things online.
Let me say that, say this, uh, we have worked on that on the website. The only problem is it's very expensive to get our meetings, uh, or, excuse me, ordinances on the website. Uh, because we've already looked into that and. Gary, do you remember what they call when we go to the website or something?
It was open to me, right? And one time they said it was a thing brandy just to transfer everything over, take our documents, transfer them over. Do you want that? That wasn't even called, so additionally, all of that, all of that.
Regardless, that's, that's, that's all for another day. Right. And I'm not saying that I disagree, that I agree, I don't have any, any point that we didn't put on the website, I agree to get it over there. I'm, I'm all working, uh, now, I'm not the web administrator because I'm not, uh, that technologically fine. Uh, and that's why I was, uh, actually under that, doing a lot of that. Randy does some of the traffic, he's updated, um, the Facebook page, you know, Randy keeps it updated as well, which lots of people, I'll, I'll take it. So there's methods that are a little more extensive, but, you know, for the horse county goes around their website and helps them to scan and upload. Deal, there's not much to it.
There's always the issue to the house, I would say.
Well, and that's like, any ordinance can be, yeah, that's all it is. So I, I, and I, I appreciate you saying that and that's always great. And I'm sure that we were walking there to be thankful, we did it, it's just obviously not feasible for everybody, just to leave from, don't throw, leave from wherever you arrive. You can't, you can't call with Randy, have a regular home, uh, we'll try to work with. That's just like, if I said that he could hold me out, I never would have turned my phone off. I would not let anybody come, uh, to schedule a meeting, like you did today. And there are getting people directing all of their house, you know, it's easier for them. I'll need to be glad to meet you. So I, I have absolutely nothing, nothing to hide or put, you know, back on the back part. There's a lot to say, there's, there's a reason for that, that's why I'm like, I'm being able to do this. And how you, the legislature made it more, like, where it has to be, uh, has to be without. Again, my only, my only, uh, difference I think that we can deal with would be the judiciary. I said, um, to the council members, should be playing, we grow to the point that I'm hoping to grow to. Then we can come back and always submit, uh, to the, the, the. Can I say something? But I'm just going to say, uh, there's ten of us council members on this thing. Anyone else can be councilor. Sharing relations. We've got three major committees. Personally, I feel like if we want to better the city, we ought to split the council members up. Put an equal amount on each three committees and every year they roll that. What they does that allows every council member to work through every department to know how this city operates. What good is it to have a council member that doesn't know how his department operates? He's not doing the city things good. He's not doing the budgeting good. And he's not doing the citizens. That's, that's just how I, I'm going to make another point. When you look at, when you're new councilman, you're trying to figure out what our chiefs and citizen chiefs are doing and they're there, they're talking to you and they're saying, hey, we're doing this, we're doing this. What's the difference? We have a whole committee and we're not going to be at. But I mean, I'm just saying, you're right, but ultimately, I don't, I think just here recently that when we started getting media updates on Facebook. So I haven't seen any other committee. And I'm glad I made that. Here's the deal, somebody's gonna make, probably never two years. Well, yeah, I'm saying there were two years, somebody, somebody will, it's a four-year term. Every, every two years, five moments are up and down, whether the citizens wants or not. And so, don't put two people on a committee that are going up for election on that five-year term. At least leave somebody on there and rotate them out with whatever they've got.
There's no point.
There's no point. And, and I, I know where you're going to find when I say this, but the problem is not our trip, I have a lot of trips. There's some point where it's kind of that. The mayor has the discretion to, 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 he feels, or she feels, needs to be on these committees. And that is a discretion that the mayor has and should have. And that has to be covered on by the council members, just remember that, it's got to be approached. We want to look at it that way, this, this ordinance, uh, would have to be really big to be done. And even if it's a really large, large, uh, vote, I'm happy to say, you know, I don't know, and I was ready to talk with, for, uh, now, we're just trying to be transparent for the city. What I'm talking about, I'm saying, but I, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with being transparent. I think the only disagreement is the, the difference between a minimum of two and three. And I think that should be something that the mayor should have a little bit of discretion of. I don't care who the mayor is, whether it's mayor to everybody, it's my place. Should be something the mayor should have discretion of.
I want to say something that what Paul said earlier about, um, the council members needing, needing to know what each department, how the city's actually running and everything. And there are classes to take to municipal that are good for some of that. It's not about taking care of any specific thing for our particular city, but it does give you guidelines on what your position is as a council member. Um, and what, you know, how do you better yourself with that? So I do suggest that you look on that and, uh, take some of those classes.
And it's all true, it's a whole lot different.
It is, it is a lot different, but it does give you a lot of good information. So, I mean, I had nothing to go by and that helped me from it this way.
And just to clarify, the other change in meetings where one's ever commissioned to turn around and throw it, it's almost would be effective by it. Not all right. I think that topic one was the three. Honestly, I think this probably is the only pick up we've got right now, the ocean. Um, and I still, uh, create a rate that I think the mayor should have discretion on that.
Why does it really matter, already there's a certain setting?
It's just to have the number of citizens who want to be able to, uh, have any input on the committee, that's one. As a other, the more councilmen you have, the more you're already being, you know, the more councilors want to have to do with the committee. About having that extra session if needed.
So the stadium is on.
Does it have to be seven or the sort of, yeah, check they hold, they, they, they hold, they, they, so. And again, committees, they can't ask any, uh, all they, they, all they can do is they're.
We all know that, so I'm saying it's a team and it's, and if you want to, it really matters if it's already counted in there.
The answer, my answer to that is, is we got, and, and it's not, it's like you. Anywhere in the future, uh, it's their final, the council, you've got three councilors that have been set against any one person, they do, they do. And they're all on the same committee. And they can explain the things with the other committee members, uh, to, to do whatever they want. That's you, that mayor matters, I guess. You as a mayor don't put on the gift, well, I'm standing, but.
I don't think you can actually ever have, you know, you're never gonna know that. Why, you're not like that.
You're back to the rock.
Where there's two members or three members.
And that's why, that's why we're, why, what the council needs. I'm not saying that if you look, if you look at what meetings right now, the chairman, the chairman, I have more to the council. I'm just saying that a mayor should not be, uh, handcuffed or really have to have that many, uh, council members on that. So, and that's, that's how we're here for, like that to say. My opinion is different than Brad's opinion, you know, maybe one of us are necessarily wrong. It's just that we have different things. I express my opinion, he expresses, John Paul expresses, um, and it's, I think it's just where we're at. I, I can't, I can't be verified, so I think we've got enough interest for there to be three, love to be three. We've got enough interest for everybody to be, to have three on two different ones and four on the other track. That's all that, that's, that is the case. So, so I think that's a monumental thing for the city and just moving forward. And I think that takes a lot of love and effort, and, and, I will, I will be there. But I can get, that's, you don't have to, but I'm saying that's just making that my, my, my job, my duty as a mayor is to be a committee. It's like, I think it's easier to get dressed for the head through guns, like you stand in.
The conflict is much on Paul's thing, having, like, a safe one, like, but that's what you did with that, somebody. The problem that Chris, like John Paul's saying, having, like, seat one, but that's why you did have somebody that's been on here, that's going to be on here the next year, okay? A lot of, yeah, you don't have all day, just, that's the reason why we wanted to stagger our terms for council. And please, maybe we can go that way also.
Well, that, that can be done, that's the way, but, again, it's, that's a discretion that the mayor has. And that, who the mayor puts on, but, uh, I'm not mistaken, I don't know if you guys, if you guys anybody that's done this, but I did look at it, uh, there are some laws of how things have to be done. I don't know that, that, my understanding is, it is matters, they establish, who goes on watch. And so, I don't know that ordinance can override that, uh... Well, I think, any ordinance, there's an ordinance already in place, or you have this ordinance that says that it's the mayor's responsibility to appoint people to these committees. Uh, I don't, I can't point at the exact ordinance already in place, because that's the way it functions now, is that, right, we have, we're, for what it is, remember. I, I remember we dealt with this, well, and that's, I, we dealt with this a lot back, because we used to have, if I'm remembering correctly. If I remember correctly, we dealt with this, uh, in twenty sixteen, because Barbara was the mayor. And there were committees that were supposed to be meeting, that never met, and as I recall, she wanted to get more citizens involved in on it and less council people on it. Because, uh, if I remember this right, because the council folks, it was like they were supposed to be meeting all the time, and, uh, she wanted more community input from it. And if you're gonna have so many council members meeting all the time, if you just have a council, I think just kind of the, the way the discussion went back then. And so, uh, if you ask this, uh, ordinance which said it's the mayor appointing the committees, it's still functions and they're recommendations to the council. Uh, I'm just, that's, that's the way that I remember it. And once again, just, everybody's known of these committees just to make recommendations, they can't pass anything behind me. Um, so, I don't know if that's helpful or answers the question at all, but, if you, your question was...
Our, my question, you had to add to this ordinance, this new ordinance, that we are looking at, that we have now, on the committee, could it be added that the committees might have staggered the, 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 like, seat one, uh, to take?
I don't see any reason why it couldn't, uh, it would be, in, in some ways, a contradicting ordinance sixteen, which gives the mayor, uh, the sole authority to appoint committees. And who serves on those committees, because now it's a committee. But I don't say that it's on my part, that's just me, if there were another mayor, another mayor, another mayor, who'd have their, I don't see. I don't have an issue with somebody saying one seat to them, that's, I'm just, people, I think it's not a problem that you're, like, I realize these committees all, uh, can't change every year.
Correct.
They should change every year, if one needs changing, or if you don't have that seat, I'll, I'll have an issue with that.
Yeah, that was all I was thinking, that you said.
Well, I, I was, I was...
Your discretion, while I can get it, yes, but if we are repealing authorities of this, looking at repealing sixteen, as Jimmy was saying. But this ordinance is looking at repealing sixteen, and in order to make it to where it's seat one, seat two, we could add, so the committee, uh, we might have, uh, two or three. I have no thought in that, but council members, uh, they want to, and they take, that's actually...
We had, had that each committee, three main committees, uh, has at least one member of each seat. That's what you want to get at, and I, I mean, I agree with that, so, so let me just say, response to that, I think, and maybe what the mayor was referring to, I think you did, to like a separation of powers issue here. So, for example, you could provide ordinance to set to the council, appoints all the members of each committee. Well, the problem with that is, as the mayor was kind of referring to, it's an executive function to make appointments to committees. Like, it's the mayor who makes appointments, it's the governor makes appointments, it's the president who makes appointments, typically, uh, or boards, commissions, and things that, that your governor appoints the members of the game, fish commission. We've got city commissions, we've got city committees, and so I think, to the mayor's point, appointments are kind of an executive function now. But if there're gonna be a certain number of council members, and that they come from one position to, I don't think that's probably approaching too far on that. But I do think if you got to the point where you had ordinance to set the council, appoints all the members of the committee, then I think you might be kind of approaching on that executive authority, which I think is what the mayor was referring to. Yeah, I was saying, I'm just, I mean, I, I wasn't saying that you were trying to take away that power proposition, on that, that, I, there's, again, I didn't do that, or, effectively, like, committee, you're interested in, uh, you're just kind of, I didn't say that. But, I mean, I, again, I don't have an issue with what Eric was talking about, uh, you know, I have at least one, uh, committee member, three, six, you know, six, one, two, three. If y'all, if y'all would, uh, I mean, here's the thing, it's only, it's breaking this ordinance back, it's law, and also, everybody's gonna be against it, or has to be against it, with the issue of the best part, you're allowed to see the actual house, and the last seat, red, three times, yeah, but do that, you, so, uh...
Well, the whole point of this, uh, ordinance is to have more transparency, is that...
Yeah, I, I just said another layer that we see, y'all, in general, obviously, that, uh, probably, that's something that comes through committee, and it's walking on to wherever it goes at. And, uh, it's, there's a little bit of a gap there, so we have time to look and see what's going on, and find out, learn what it is exactly that we're going on with. And, uh, and we've got at least two in the council, people that explain those things, but we, right now, they, we just get the, the third name, and it's kind of like a mad dash, and we're trying to figure out what, and we still got our day jobs and, and things. It can be weird, I'm trying to get over there between third seat and two seats to make a good decision. Because technically, these ordinances, correct or wrong, they should go to the committee first, and the committee should recommend for the council. Just not necessarily, there's not, there is not a law that I know of that has to go here, like, on these ordinances. Some of these ordinances I have to give Jimmy, I have to read and like sure that he knows where he's at. Larry, Larry, right, he has to practice, he's like also a legislator. And sometimes it takes a little time for him to get back with the meaning of some of the ordinances. That's why a lot of them are so late to get out there. Uh, me personally, I can't speak to future mayor. Me personally, I don't have an issue sending you a copy of the ordinance or a resolution as soon as I get it. Uh, and you just need to be able to tell us and tell you off and at even when we've got, uh, a resolution coming up next month. It'll be able, uh, uh, it'll take long, long property, and then, uh, so, you know, now as soon as I get that perfected, then I'll send that out to y'all, y'all already looking at it. Uh, obviously, I should have given that to y'all at all, I was out there, I should have, uh, all the, uh, marches as well. Uh, so, I'm not trying to, uh, get to y'all, you all, everybody else in your vicinity, uh, from the old house. So, uh, and that's just, uh, the deal, I don't have a problem with that, so I get them. Sometimes it's early before I get them, I'm not ready, uh, so, yeah, just talk about it.
Everybody has to stand up their first thing anyway now.
My law.
My law, and, well, so I was saying earlier, um, as far as the transparency, if we had more citizens in law than in committees, then that gives us more transparency for the citizens. And like Mayor said, any council member can attend, maybe things that would be a part of the discretion, uh, is, uh, is. Does the citizen know who we're on, who he's naming up? Do they know where we're at, is it on the, on the, where it's at?
No, given that overall call, for, for, I'm not putting anybody on.
No, I know that, I'm just.
Are she talking about, you know, about, you know, about, uh, that is all the way it's on that.
That, uh, that would be a brand question sometimes.
And if it's not, I'm waiting for it.
Yeah, it is, it's all like you were saying, if a citizen's not, they don't know who to go to, to talk to somebody, you know, you know, who to shoot, right?
I don't think we'd ever make a call, you know. This is just starting point, I'm excited for doing this, uh, obviously, it's quite a bit. We don't change anything, nothing changes, so, this place, you know, we don't do this, and we kind of just go where we are. I don't think there'll be any surprises from here on, we still have to take any reason, and, so. I think trying to, don't fix the ordinance, and, again, at least two council members, or four, or whatever you decide on. Uh, I feel like at least it was planned, uh, and it's not, it's not too, uh, uh, I plan to disown it for, for, in regards, uh, what he's saying to the committees, on, 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 that, uh, but we are going to have to go down to committee meetings, uh, and that would be more than one, it's already said. For a lot of citizens, uh, twenty sixteen, the one I remember taking was talking about the reason why I wanted to add citizens to the committees, because we couldn't get council members to show up. We started counseling council members that would not show up. If you're, if you're running seven council members at committee meeting, and you decide to go forward with the ordinance, then why not consider that a council meeting, just for your, 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 uh, there. So, having citizens on the committees makes good sense. Having too many council members, somebody who's had all council members in a, a mixed group, it's a whole lot easier when you've got an extra one. And, uh, as far as the number goes, I mean, the majority, about less than two, no more than three, and plans of commission are already set up, and it's five, so you can all be two council members on that commission. But it's a commission and not a committee, and that's a governing body, so, uh, as far as the number goes, it doesn't matter, maybe as long as it's less than four, and, uh, obviously, it's, it, it will behoove the, uh, the council and the mayor, whoever's sitting there, to have, um, a mixed bag of policies, values, you know, that, 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 that. They know bill, they know shirts, they know all kinds of stuff, and from their day jobs, that, uh, are invaluable to the council members' decisions, so, uh, I, yeah, you can, uh, look at everything, and I have no, I have no real issues with anything that's written here, um. Terms of service, I mean, if you want to do one year, that's fine, if you want to do a two-year term. We always did previously, we did two-year terms on committees, and that's just because all the councils paid more, um, two years, or two years, once you got on the committee, that's two years, I mean, that's, that's something to be thought about, but, I've never bothered on, uh, on committees, so, uh, so.
Well, I'm betting on the terms, you have one of these years, they only make four times, I mean, that there's sometimes might learn something, you know what I mean? Or if you had two years time, I'm not saying, I'm just saying, you kind of make that, that really.
Four, five, I don't, I don't agree that four, five, it's another, but, I mean, you know, when you, when you start talking about things in the past, with the way you were mentioning, let's begin, the committee got together to talk about things, things for, uh, and we're going to come up with a running handle, and we met once a year for the budget, to create the budget, or we met twice, once in a tough couple weeks later, to make sure that we're all good with the numbers, that has been here. So, every time a year, we keep people in the gang, you know, credit like finance, you know what you're talking about here, to get the essence of things into both of works and help society, uh, I mean, personnel policy committee, I get that, uh, and if you want to keep, you know, a commission should be listed on this one, because commissions, commission, and, uh, and how important is that considered, commission or committee? Thank you, so, operation committee, uh, the operation committee, is there a commission yet? So, I mean, this commission, it's actually one that's never been changed, I'll be, I'll, if this, if, I mean, if this is standing commission, about the rules are, I mean, there are limited divisions going, uh, separate commission and committee. If this is a commission, it should not, it should not be a service, so, it should be, because they should have their own, uh, setup, and, yeah. Yeah, well, I completely agree with that, but it isn't one of the points, which is with these committees, and this is John Paul's point earlier, I'd be very hesitant about, you know, thinking of these as traditional committees, like United City, State Legislature, Congress, because those committees, there's a whole process for that, and those committees, they, they vetting bills, so, I'd say legislature, those committees vet bills. They have to pass the committee before they can go to the full House or the full Senate, same thing in, in the United States Congress. These are advisory committees, they're made up of people who have not been elected, and the majority of the people on them have not been elected. Only people in this city who've been elected to, to cast votes, to make the law for this city, to pass the ordinance, as opposed to the city to make those decisions are you guys, and, you know, just be careful about, like, well, this has to be assigned to a certain committee, number one, you're going to have four committees, that's what I said. And many of the ordinances that you're going to consider aren't fit squarely within any one of those committees, uh, the people that might have the expertise to consider them, so, it might be something that, that doesn't fit squarely within one of these four committees. And again, it's made up, it will be made up of a lot of people who are not elected, and so, the thing that, like, every ordinance that's going to come forward, the council has to be vetted, approved by one of these committees, that's not the way these advisory committees are set up. It's not the, the, the process that you got from state legislation, federal legislation, uh, federal government, these are just advisory committees, that the community members get more input, because you guys are ultimately the decision makers, so I just want to kind of fill that out there. And I think the ultimate goal was to have standing committees that were, but since we only got to be in, ran into the, the issue of, uh, too many on board on committees at one time, and, yeah, a lot of stuff, I'm just waiting, I don't have to be. And, and John Paul, uh, about, you know, it shouldn't be acted basically presented ordinance to a committee or a council for the full council. Now, any council member can get an ordinance before this council by having to put on the agenda, progress committee, you know, follow the proper processes, but again, it's just not the same, because these are advisory, they're made up of people who are not elected, people who are not in charge of responsibility, actually making and deciding the law, they're just there to give, give advice, correct instructions. Uh, I'd just be very hesitant about, you know, trying to think of it as, you know, must be dedicated to this committee, and has to be passed by this committee before it can be presented by the council, that's not what this is, so. I, I do like the discussion about how, let me, the number of committees you can be on, because, second, if somebody's been on that committee at some point in time, probably you've been there too, uh, it's all a trip, and you're probably too far down the path, but you do have a, uh, you've got other interests, kids, grandkids, and the city is a force, the city is a force, but, I don't have to be on every decision until we get this.
Council, great, welcome, will the council be open to hearing from an actual committee member, I, I, would you pass a be open to hearing from a committee member, because I have some feedback to give, not much to give that, pardon, ordinance passing or failing.
Okay, you're back tonight, or?
Yes, I'd like to comment.
Uh, I don't, it doesn't involve me.
So, I'm on the Parks and Rec Committee, that used to be Parks and Rec, but it's now Sports and Recreation. This is just one example of the awesome grant money that we're looking forward to, and the projects that are being prioritized currently. But because our Sports and Recreation Committee does not meet, we cannot field that, and we cannot solicit feedback from the community about what park priorities do look like to see these grants funds go to. So, Mr. Gasway, as you say, these, uh, committees should not be, and they'll be all vetting process, but they're absolutely, the process of applying a balance between citizens and between lawmakers, and vetting priorities and projects and ordinances, the stream line, that those are where your ordinances and resolutions can be born, as Mr. Gasway said, every council member has the authority to present their own ordinance. So, does this ordinance materialize out of nowhere, or are they meeting regularly, and soliciting feedback from citizens, from people that are experts in their fields, and are we having a true representation of the priorities of our citizens? I would have loved to have given feedback on the things that I wish that our grant monies were going to parks was, but because I have no forum, and no place to do that, because our committees do not meet, I walk in frustration waiting to be told where our grant money will be applied, uh, in terms of public improvements.
Uh, that, I want to explore the Sports and Recreation Committee, uh, or especially the committee on smart.
Uh, I, I.
I have enough trouble to take coffee, so, I will take care of that issue.
So, the, we, we still have a, a way to access those ordinances, and I know that I can call, but this, the Sports and Recreation Committee is just going to committees that experience these frustrations. If someone calls and says, hey, why is this building sitting empty, or what's the holdup on this smell, or why can't we turn this into that? We have different committees that, that need this.
That's the whole difference, to you.
Now, what's the thing?
When, 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 stop, stop. I will, you know, the comment, and I was, that's my comment, and I was going to respond to your comment, and it was an argument, I'm not doing that. Now, why do it in setting empty, it's not a committee issue.
Not a planning and zoning issue.
And that's not.
A major monthly issue.
It's not planning and zoning issue, why do it in setting empty? We don't own those buildings, we do own them, and that's the issue that we need to deal with here. We don't own them, that's the point, the business owner, and who is that room to sell to or whatever.
I was just kidding, and, oh.
Now, this is, the S R E committee is our grant show, I'm making the decision where these grants go. You know, you've written grants, grants don't go where you want to put, you write the grant for what you need to get. If you have to get approved for it, then you have to use the word that specific thing, such as the grant that we just approved for lighting at the S R F D sports complex, that grant has to be used for lighting at the sports complex. Um, the statement where that money goes, that's the way grants work, you write a grant, you write it for exactly what is, allows you to request and ask for it. And that's what we do, and we write anything that we can find a grant for that will help the city, that's what we're trying to do, so. I'm happy with this, I think we should, I think, cities will be settled on, I'd much rather have three, but, I'm not going to down that sword, so. I'll tell you what else is yes, that's just something that's in writing and in the ordinance. I think that, uh, there are sections, maybe five, and good, consistent, I've said members and include at least two council members. I would, I would like to say at least two, I don't know what word. That gives the mayor, that is, that give power to be able to say, okay, I want two, or I want three. But it also limits, there cannot be more, or, can also be more, so you don't ramble on something through a committee. Like I said, I made, I made, everybody see my full, my, my, so, I, if it says that, then that gives the mayor, whoever the mayor is, it's only to, if he wants two, he wants one, that's right, if he wants three, then he can put three, but that's not even more. Right, right, that's true. Everybody's checking, you know, just, I've got those, those money, what Carol recommended, I had, that committee has at least, one member, you see, I had, uh, no commissions on it, on the ordinance, had at least two council members, no ordinance. All right, for good, that will move on to the next, next thing on this, and I will actually have this done, and I'll have to have everybody, and, uh, um, this, uh, that is very important to discuss, and this is one of the things that, uh, kind of needs to grow on. We've got two thousand eleven, the motor tractor that's in shop, uh, the total cost to repair the tractor forty to the shop, uh, will be in the twenty-five thousand dollar range, the transition is about all the five draws. We can trade that tractor again as is, and buy a new one for under sixty-five dollars plus that, same size tractor, just twenty-five, one hundred and sixty, one hundred and sixty-five. Uh, this will be a new motor tractor comparable, uh, I've checked brass from other dealers, such as John Deere, and, uh, others, uh, and this is the least about the dollars less than the John Deere, uh, there, and I have not checked the cat, but, you know. And I have not checked the cat, but, you know. That's called, yeah. So, anyway, what are your thoughts on the two options? I'll say trade. You know, up here, you said, turn track eleven, let two thousand eleven, it's going across twenty-five thousand dollars, which is almost half of a brand of cars. Trade, that was my thought, y'all will have to approve the sixty thousand dollars anyway. But I wanted to tell me all of that, and I also wish you would make the decision to go here, that is good. Uh, so, can I get somebody's motion or something, because this is something like a motion. I'll say.
Please say.
I think sure my motion and John Hall's second to trade it, or in discussion on that. All the voters say aye. Oh, no. Thank you, I hear that. I tried to get your attention before you went to the next side of the chair, but I had some comments on the ordinance, I think. Can we go back to it? I don't know if it has to be a. Uh, should we go back? I can't say. Here's, here's the concern I have, and I hit on this, John Hall can't mention it. In section A, any item proposed for inclusion on the city council agenda that falls within the jurisdiction of any advisory committee must first be reviewed and approved by the respective committee. On approval, the item should be submitted to the mayor for approval and placement on the council agenda. This process is intended to ensure proper review and deliberation prior to formal council action. Well, there's a lot of problems to this. Number one, who determines what falls within the jurisdiction of any advisory committee? There's only four advisory committees that I see. Some of them, as I pointed out earlier, there are going to be some things that are going to be, uh, the ordinance that you guys may be considering that won't fit squarely within the finance, public works, public safety, personnel. And who, which one does that go to? And who decides where it goes to? And then beyond that, before it can be put on the agenda for all of you guys, and I must say, you know, for the point about, you know, equal representation in making decisions. All of you have been elected by the citizens' agreement and between the ten of you, all ten of you represent every citizen that lives in the city. So, you guys have the ultimate power, and these are advisory committees. And I feel like, you know, when you look at section eight with the committee review requirement, this is far beyond an advisory committee. It sounds like a formal committee process that's worked for approval. It must be reviewed, number one, and approved by the respective committee before it can be included on the city council agenda. Well, then you got the discussion, what is it you're always going to be? You know, maybe four times a year quarterly. So, you have to wait for three months before something's approved, possibly before it ever makes it off to the council agenda. Well, what if you need quick action? And then it just kind of violates the whole principle that we currently operate under and that I think every city in the state operates under, which is if you're a council member, you are fully empowered to get an item on this, on the council agenda. Where the true decision makers sit by following the proper processes and submitting to the court in advance of meeting. I understand the thought behind this, I don't think it's necessarily wrong, because that's how we function in the state, that's how they function at federal level. It's a whole different process. You've got hundreds of representatives and you've got twenty different committees and, you know, it, 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 word for word, you can have such a matter that's appropriate for each committee. Here, this, you know, I understand the thought, I don't think it's necessarily wrong. Just in practice, I would be very against, you know, with all due respect, we use this for. They're saying, yeah, the county. It's a county. Correct. Well, records goes through those, uh, not great, they need one of them on, and that's where the difference is. But when we first, that's kind of the weak side of this, it's not really to beat that. Kind of talk advisory and come in some different ways and you need to adapt it as so. But that is why some of that work, which is here, and again, these were pulled off of different places, so we would not be pulled places that. Yeah, let me just say, I don't have a dog in this spot. I don't really care what y'all decide, but you can do whatever you want. Y'all are the ones making this decision, I think. I'm just telling you, hey, if you pass it like this, don't be surprised if, you know, because there's just a lot of questions here about what your decision, I have to look back a little bit on the round. So, I could get your decision. I miss committee would call your decision. Oh, never mind, because essentially you're going to be spending money or taking money in. And they're going to want something to save. So, I mean, this could wind up going to more different committees. Well, again, I, it doesn't matter to me, one way or the other, I don't, again, I don't have a dog in this spot. I'm simply, if you wanted to set it up the way that I think my unit vision, maybe the great county uses it and other places around the state might use it that way, you absolutely could do that. But you probably don't need to call it an advisory committee. And you probably need to consider it more like a formal standing committee that is made up of almost entirely council members. Because you guys are such a taxation, like, I mean, if the legislature, for example, this judiciary committee, we don't have members of the public serving on the judiciary committee. When we both build up that committee that goes in before the entire house, the same thing with the senate, that's what that process works. Here, you're going to have people, again, that's definitely, if you want to make it advisory, that's fine. But then I think that the whole process of having to get approval through that committee falls apart because those people have never been elected by anyone and charged with the responsibility of passing anything. And then you're kind of giving them that veto power to have to pass my committee first, like, well, who elected you? And so, if it's, if you want to make it a real standing committee, you can do it, but it probably needs to be all council members. Now, they need, probably need to be every one. Now, if you want to make it, if you want to have members of the public, if you want to make it advisory, that's fine. But then I think I don't think you should be, uh, requiring review and approval before you can get on the council agenda. Again, I don't care what you do, it's y'all's decision. I'm just wanting out that the mission is if you want to do it that way. And I agree, this was my, uh, my, also, this was initially standing committee, we talked advisory, we also were doing, uh, we said, we're going to check it. So, obviously, maybe what we do, the great county is all, all the way to the end. So, I'm just, not just, this is a critical check. And I'll say this, in the future, that very well might be a need to what we handle this, because if we get up to twenty-four thousand, they could invite us up. Uh, great counties get, what, a hundred and ten thousand, maybe. Yeah, but figure that for us, John, so, and that, and somewhere John for, John for city, their council, you know, they're getting a couple of people in the city, so. I mean, it's a little different, you've got that big people compared to seventy-five hundred. And as we grow and lock up, I can see, uh, making this on this in the future as we grow, uh, making it better. But as we stand, uh, we have a little problem about that advisory committee. Uh, I understand what he's saying, uh, again, uh, according to section eight, if John Hall wants to present up that ordinance, uh, he has, like all, the rights and the powers to the council, he shouldn't have to go through a, a, a committee. Although it should be, uh, good to have to, and, and let the committee look at it, let's just, whatever, say, if John Hall can look at it, then either for your jurisdiction, all will drop in, or drop dead. So, I mean, that is the way it's written, uh, as I say, that's the way it's written. It would have to go, it would have to be, come out of the, maybe, which limits, council members from the back of that, which is all of us. So, I think we just look at it this way, again, it's in, we want to be advisory, we want to be standing committee, and then we have to type the notes that Mr. Gasway provided us and just make those changes. And again, I, I'm really, it's just about, about making that, ultimately, the idea behind this was just to get us to work and evolve and working together as a council. And, uh, so, if you guys want to read rights, section eight, uh, five, we all good. So, I, we're going to bring around that, uh, section eight committee review requirement. I think it should be more, because any, any council member has the right to get on the agenda and, and so many, like, hanging out of the pros and pro's of the city council, also within the jurisdiction of the advisory committee, and the council feels and needs to be reviewed, uh, and approved by the respective committee. At that point, the council would tell which committees to review that, whether it be safety, uh, whoever, finance, uh, upon, uh, upon review of that committee, then it can be, can be respected to the council for, uh, approval or, or, uh, those words. So, if you, honestly, there's probably a few things in here that this team would look at, that's where we go, right? And I just think. Something that you can think a little harder than just making notes. And that's who we are. We're not a hybrid of all, we don't matter to the other, that's right. Yeah, I, I agree, again, it doesn't matter to me which one y'all want to be. If you want to have all council members, we'll make it all council, but I don't think it would be right to give veto power over what this council can consider to people who were never elected. And that's what you're going to be doing if you have an advisory committee made up of citizens where proposed ordinance is have to be reviewed and approved before you guys can vote on it. And I, I don't think that's why we did it. Now, if y'all want to have it made up of all council members, which I think we had this problem before, because council members didn't show up, which is one of the, if I remember right, we changed it before sixteen. And of course, you can't make a decision. Yeah, and if you did, uh, but if you want to make it all council members, so that it has to follow that process, which is how we do it in the state, and how they do it at the federal level, how they do it in the great county, we can set it up that way. Y'all would set it up like we talked about, which is the advisory committees, they have members of the public on them, they have some council members on them, not too many council members on them. I guess, or is it anyway, now, like, the vote on it ultimately anyway, so. I have a pre-council meeting before the council meeting. Uh, then, then let's set it up advisory, but that's y'all's decision. I'm not asking this, that we're, we're councilmen in agreement on section eight. If you redo that, rewrite it, or, um, comply. Uh, and if you go ahead and, like, straighter, and request your act, you go ahead and read through it, and if you see any changes, no changes that need to be made for compliance, for legal reasons, that we can make those, then we can present it to the council members. And there's, we agree with this agreement. I think that, yeah, if y'all got one thing, one like today, go for it, email me, call me, text me, reach out to me, however, if you want to make it. Get my note on that, yeah, I'm sorry. And you should have caught that earlier, but it's why I go along. I'm bad. All right, so, thank you for tracking me, although we'll look on that. And with that, now I have a mayor's report. Uh, we have been very busy, it was a month. Uh, all we know, we have a chief, uh, chief columns. I believe it's very high for our, our, and for the city. Uh, we were careful, you know, since. government, and for the city, uh, we were careful and attentive and served, uh, the interviews, the background, uh, they take this lot, uh, so, we will, again, uh, Chief Thomas, and we're all big names, uh, in this ball, um, make sure softball league about lighting down, it's been a big hit, uh, with players, fans alike, I heard many players said that we should have longer, uh, looking forward to next year's league, I'm sure Racy, take what she's learned from this year and make it next year even better. The new thing, T R C is a process of being built, uh, thanks to several folks that don't make it a part of the plans, um, which, uh, will remain anonymous, uh, we will notice, uh, don't be anonymous, but here, like, that allows us, that they can, you can get in. Um, uh, City West Wing and the event, T R C with approximately four hundred attendants, uh-